Let's begin right away. I'd like to begin with you, Donna Korn. And again, thanks for being here this afternoon. This is truly a highly unusual situation in the long and interesting annals of Broward County politics. You have been suspended from office by Governor Ron DeSantis, and you're campaigning for another four-year term. What are you telling voters in terms of why they should vote for you in light of the suspension?
So they should vote for me because I am by far the best qualified candidate. I am a prior teacher here in Broward County at Western High School, taught English. I am the mother of three children. One of them is actually still attending Broward Schools. The other two have both graduated. I'm a 28-year businesswoman here in Broward County. Very proud of my long tenure doing business with businesses across the county, actually helping to even bring some businesses into the county, and then also a lifelong child advocate. So I really truly bring the experience to the board, as well as obviously being 11 years on the board. I have asked the hard questions. I have been accountable for the role that I have played on the board, and I am very proud of all of the things that I've been able to accomplish, such as being able to advocate for things like "Here Comes the Bus", being able to reimagine middle schools across our district. And that's something we're still actively working on. Being able to identify and save $50 million, over $50 million, in becoming self-insured. We've been able to put that back in the pockets of our teachers, our educators, and in our classrooms. And I've been able to do these things while also working with many of our individual programs, like the JROTC. And I work with them annually on what we are going to do to be able to initiate honoring and respecting our veterans across this district. And so that's something I work with, with administration. So those are the things that I actually bring to the board. In terms of the suspension, this is something that the governor promised in one of his campaign promises when he first ran. And he delivered on that promise. And at this time, I will let all of the voters know I will continue to deliver on the promise that I've made. And I've lived for the last 11 years in being their countywide representative in the best interest of education over politics.
Okay, well, I'm asking a follow-up question here. And that is whether it's despite your best intentions, whether you may be making a bad situation much worse. And here's what I mean. For the first time ever in the history of Broward County, maybe in the history of any school district in Florida, a majority of school board members were not elected by voters. They were appointed by a governor. And of course, even though we know school board members are nonpartisan, the governor who did the appointing is of the opposite political party than the majority of voters in Broward County. And so if you're re-elected, we have no way of knowing for sure, but you could be suspended a second time and replaced by another Ron DeSantis appointee. Why should voters choose that outcome?
I am so glad you asked that question because for some reason that rumor mill has been all over this county. So I will tell you why. It is because the governor himself, when he first announced in 2019 this grand jury investigation, he himself said that at the time, he would himself have made those removals. But because those individuals, including myself, were duly elected, the electorate had all the information that he had, he was actually not with the authority to be able to remove us. He finds himself in that same place here. The grand jury has done their investigation. He's taken action. And therefore afterwards, beyond just precedent, whether it's in the advisory opinions of Supreme Courts for many, many years, back since the 1940s, to the fact that in his own words, he did not take action in 2019, but instead did this grand jury report. And then furthermore, actually said after removing Scott Israel, that if he were duly elected, he would not remove him again. So these are things that actually came directly from the governor. And I believe that he will stay true to those words.
Okay, fair enough. You're speaking to the editorial board, the opinion side of the Sun Sentinel, Ms. Korn. And I say this respectfully, but I wonder if you have more faith in Ron DeSantis maybe than the voters of Broward County do. But we'll discuss that some more. Let me switch to Alan Zeeman, challenger.
Not a matter of...
I've got a... I'm sorry?
I said this is not a matter of faith. This is a matter of his own words and past legislative advisory opinions and the court system.
Okay, but what you're saying is, and I don't want to minimize it. What you're saying, I think what I hear you saying is because he said he wouldn't suspend Scott Israel a second time, you don't think that applies to you either, right?
I believe that he will not suspend me. And in fact, even in 2019, he could have taken an action at that time. And he himself stated publicly that he did not have the authority. And he would again be in the same position and not have the authority.
Okay. I have, we all have several questions for Alan Zeeman. But Alan, I'll first just open the floor and ask you to respond to what Donna Korn has said as her opening statements here.
I believe that the opposite is far more likely to happen than what Donna would like to happen. And these are not based on rumors, but it's just based on Florida Constitution, which gives the governor the authority to remove people. Donna and the other three have been suspended. There are clear guidelines in the Constitution that says the governor may remove. My own political read of this, I think that he's very likely to do that. I believe, though, that conjecture is just that. You know, we can both have our own opinion. Donna's opinion and my opinion may be self-serving. Certainly may be biased. Constitution, though, of Florida is pretty black and white. And more importantly, there's just an inherent amount of risk, Steve. I would be glad to debate Donna about who's most qualified for this job. I'd love to debate kind of the history of Broward County schools and them being the only B-rated school district in South Florida amongst Miami-Dade, Palm Beach, and Broward County. I'd love to talk about the smart bond. I'd love to talk about the substance of the grand jury report. All those things, I think, are legitimate. But I also think it's legitimate to think about risk. And I have no pretense to be removed from this office. I intend to serve four full years. I intend to bring the whole weight of my executive experience in doing things that are significant and meaningful and of service to the people that I was asked to serve. I just believe that there's a choice between electing somebody for which we have no pretense of being removed for somebody for which there is some risk. And it's up to the voters to decide how much risk they think would happen there. The outcome, though, is horrific in my mind. To have two Governor DeSantis appointees on the Broward County School Board gives them the opportunity to have tremendous influence and power over the next $25 billion that is spent on our schools and the policies related to that. My policies and Governor DeSantis' policies are very different. And I am mortified to just think about the prospect of having two appointees on the Broward County School Board.
Okay. Let me go back to Donna Korn for a moment because one of the points that Alan Zeeman has made in campaign appearances and campaign literature, and I'm going to, I'll read directly from from his website, his campaign website. Quote, he's referring to you, Donna. Quote, "My opponent used your money, your money, that is tax money, to keep the grand jury report hidden from all of us." And we know from the reporting of Scott Travis and others that there are bills pending from you and from another school board member in front of the Broward County School Board in the many tens of thousands of dollars for legal fees. Is it factually correct that you tried, that you used, that you billed the taxpayers to keep this grand jury report away from the taxpayers?
So first, I will tell you, I am certainly disheartened that my opponent feels that due process is not something that should be afforded to elected officials as he is looking to be an elected official himself. I can tell you, he will look for that same opportunity that is provided elected officials. So there was nothing in hiding. The grand jury process is very one-sided. It is set up specifically for a prosecutor to find a resolution that has been, in essence, predetermined for him, which is exactly actually what happened with the governor. The governor stated exactly what he was looking for, and this grand jury delivered it. And so with that said, the only opportunity that anyone involved in the grand jury, actually specifically stated in the grand jury report, has is to be able to respond through the appeals process. That is part of the process. There is no representation for anyone during the grand jury proceedings. And therefore, how long it takes and how costly it is is really a matter of the process of due process and the courts. It isn't something driven by those who are actually exercising their due process. And in terms of the taxpayers paying for it, if you look back to prior grand juries, you will find that myself nor my colleagues have done anything differently than others before us. And it is fully appropriate, as it is done across the state, that elected officials are afforded that protection as they serve in their positions. And that is exactly what occurred here. So it's disappointing to hear that my colleague doesn't think that those who, while serving as should be afforded that coverage for their costs. Because in many cases, you will find that what they are actually doing in the court system, for instance, in this case, the appellate system did actually redact some of the information they found to be inappropriate or incorrect in this grand jury.
Okay. I'm going to open the floor right now to my colleagues, Dan Sweeney and Scott Travis, for any questions they might have.
I'll defer to Scott.
Okay, I'm sorry. What'd you say?
I said I'll defer to Scott.
Oh, okay. Thank you, since I was speaking anyways. So Donna, I was wondering what your feeling was about the school board voting last week to not pay for the legal fees. Do you think that sets a bad precedent? Is that going to affect you and your legal bills in any way? Is your case over? Or are you still planning on going through further appeals?
So it doesn't actually impact me regarding the due process with the grand jury report. And so I'm certainly disappointed that they decided to take that action without really having any sense of what is the impact then of those, again, who have done duly elected and were serving in their roles. But with that said, there is also some additional litigation, which is put into those dollars figures with an ethics complaint, of which I believe wholeheartedly I will be prevailing. And unfortunately, them deciding to do that means that they are not affording me that coverage that other elected officials have been afforded.
Do you know why that case is still pending? Because I think when we asked you about that a few months ago, it was supposed to be maybe in, maybe in July or August or something like that. And it seems like it still keeps going.
Yeah, so I would love to answer that question. To be honest with you, I would have liked this grand jury report to have come out sooner because it would have had an opportunity for us to be able to not have it under a cloud and to be able to talk about it like we can now. I will tell you the same with the ethics complaint. I would very, very much like this resolution to occur. I believe wholeheartedly I'll be exonerated. And I will have an opportunity to then be able to really truly focus on the education before the school board.
Okay. One thing you were not able to do last time you were here because the grand jury report was still secret, was talk about what was in the grand jury report. Well, now that that's been released, maybe you could kind of give us an idea of some of the highlights. And feel free to address any other issues besides the ones that I'm bringing up. But obviously, one of the, sort of the general theme we saw in there was that there are five school board members that let the former superintendent go out of control, and the bond program got out of control, and that nobody was minding the ship except for, I guess, the minority board members who were not in the board majority. So kind of, maybe you could address sort of the, kind of the overall allegations that were made by the grand jury that were in the public report.
Sure. So I will say that I think it actually speaks right to the fact that this was really truly a political maneuver in that, as you're going to, you refer to the minority board members just from the basis of the number. They actually voted, along with the five of us who were identified, on those bond issues. And those bond issues across the board are the reason that the grand jury gave for the majority of their response in their report. And so the fact that they remain, and in fact, one of them specifically has been on the board longer than myself, the one thing they differed on was the timing and the firing of Mr. Runcie. And so as I and the other five colleagues did not support it when it was brought up at one point, those colleagues who remain happened to have voted to let Mr. Runcie go at that time. Which is really disheartening that the governor has decided to enforce his own opinions on a local school board with not only the threat, but then the action of a grand jury proceedings and then acting on it, which really had no indictments whatsoever against any of the five of us in what we have seen before us. And yet, here we stand. So I can tell you this, that that grand jury report really reads as a Mean Girls Slam Book. I mean, the reality is, if you look at what's in the grand jury report itself, there's not a great level of credibility. They do point out some things, which by the way, as myself, as a board member, I identified as well. I have been very frustrated through much of this. And so we have done things like bring in RSM to do independent audits. We did bring in Tax Watch from the very beginning, as well as the Bond Oversight Committee. We made changes not only with CBRHiri, CBRHiri at the beginning in terms of their own administration at the top level of who was overseeing this project, and forced them to make that change internally. But then when that even didn't resolve, we made a change to AECOM. So we have gone through many, many different stages, identifying what is the best tax use. When we looked at the cost of roofing, we realized this is really exorbitant, and we're changing a lot of roofs. So we did an overall, in fact, many different workshops. And as we spoke about them, we established the fact that, yes, we could go the more inexpensive route, but then we would have short-term fixes on roofs. And for taxpayer dollars, having that longstanding 25- and 30-year use of their dollars on these roofs is what was in the best interest of taxpayer dollars, as well as the buildings that we are affording to our children. But I'll just give you a quick example for this grand jury report, for instance. There are quotes from George Washington, Pablo Picasso, Albert Einstein. I'll give you a couple of the terms that they use as well when I refer to it as this Mean Girls Slam Book. They quote, "It was a slow-boiling frog" or "a mysterious case of selective amnesia." They even go as far as describing board members as jabbering along vaguely. Or there's a statement that says, "A fish, as it is said, rots from the head down." I've read prior grand jury reports that were done before I came on as a board member, and I can tell you, there was nothing like this. There was nothing malicious. There was nothing unprofessional. And it was not written with disdain. And unfortunately, that's what we find here. So I think the grand jury speaks for itself. Yes, there are always lessons to be learned. There are lessons that I have learned along the way. And there have been opportunities for us to avail ourselves, to continuously improve the delivery of this bond. And I am very proud to say that we are going to deliver all of the projects that we promised for this bond. It has taken longer and it has cost more. That's been the case in commercial real estate across the board, as in residential. And so I look forward to being able to complete and finish this bond so our kids are in these buildings and facilities that we have promised them. Thank you for the question.
Okay, then one of the things that it mentioned in the report was that, do you believe that there, I don't know if it said, "Do you believe that there should be accountability for you?" Or "Do you believe that there should be action taken against you?" And I believe it was, the question was, "Do you believe that if somebody fails to do their job, should there be?" And I think you said yes. And then they said, "What about if a school board member fails to do their job?" And then if I didn't say that exactly correct, I think you get the idea. And your answer was, "That would be inappropriate." And they were like, "Oh, contraire." What kind of explained to us, why did you think that it would be inappropriate if a, if a school board member did not do their job for the state to take action?
Right. So I'm glad you brought that up because the reality is, what was shared in the grand jury report in this area, as well as throughout the entire report, things were completely taken out of context. And in this case, what was asked of me was whether or not I thought that the grand jury report should make a recommendation and should have the power to remove board members. And my response to that was that I thought that it was appropriate for the electorate to do so. And obviously, the state constitution speaks to there being specific things in which board members can be removed for. I will tell you emphatically, I do not believe that my actions have actually resulted in any of those allegations. I believe that they're all inaccurate. And for that reason, I believe that the electorate should continue to hold, which in this case, it does not, but should continue going forward to be able to hold the opportunity to select who they want on their local school boards. I've had that opportunity to serve for many years. And I look forward to that trust and faith for them to do so. And to give me four years to continue to do the work that I've been doing.
Okay, and one more thing related to what you said before. You'd mentioned that these minority school board members at the time did not come to the conclusion about Mr. Runcie at the same time you did. It almost made it sound like that you eventually did come to the conclusion that he was not appropriate for the job. Is that a fair statement? Or is that what you feel? Don't let me put words in your mouth if it's not. So if you could just clarify that.
I think things continue to develop for the school district. And like many things that the whole district, there's a time in which we have to acknowledge when it feels like that uphill battle is won, in which it's going to be very difficult for us to be able to stay the course. And I think Mr. Runcie, and it was certainly his decision to abide at the time that he did. I know that he took pause, and I know that it was very emotional that day. And it's one in which he said that he thought that he had hoped that would bring peace. I do hope that it brought some level of peace. Unfortunately, I think it was very misdirected that that's where that went. I think it's also misdirected that we find ourselves where we are today with school board members being suspended over what is ultimately a political promise by a governor.
Okay, and this is probably, you've, we, of course, know about your situation because it's been very public. But I assume you have concerns about Mr. Zeeman as well. So maybe you could let us know some of the things that maybe the public doesn't know because they haven't been front-page news that would give them pause about Mr. Zeeman.
So I will tell you that my campaign has really been focused on education over politics. It's been focused on the things that I've been achieving as a school board member, the things that are priorities for me. I think that there are several things that are out in, I guess, the universe about each of us. And people have an opportunity to learn about each of us. And as much Scott is, I appreciate the question. I don't think it's really appropriate for me to take this, to basically take a shot at Mr. Zeeman. He does have a reputable background in many of what he brings to the table. And so I'm not going to take that opportunity. I would like an opportunity, though, for us to really focus on what education is all about and what the school board is really focused on. So I hope we get to some of those questions, too. Thank you.
I actually had some questions for Mr. Zeeman. But if you wanted, if we wanted to continue with other people asking first.
Sure, okay, Scott, thanks. Dan, the floor is open to you.
No, no, go ahead. I think it's time for you to answer a question or two, sure.
Okay, I, I will get back to you, Scott, momentarily. I've got a couple of questions for Mr. Zeeman. Mr. Zeeman, Donna Korn has the unyielding, unwavering support in this election of the Broward Teachers Union, the bargaining agent for teachers in Broward County. And what should voters make of that? And what is your opinion about BTU sticking with Donna Korn?
Well, I think BTU is a great organization. They made a decision. I think it's interesting to know that that decision was made before anybody could file to run, Steve. And so I'm disappointed that they didn't follow the process that they normally would follow in terms of waiting to see who filed and seeing who would be best for teachers. This isn't a year in which teachers got a 1% raise and we had inflation of 8% to 9%. It's when someone like me who runs, who is a tremendous advocate, just like my father worked for Broward County Schools for 30 years, I'm a huge advocate for teachers and all educators. And I have a long history working in the Pentagon of finding money in order to put money where we need to and taking money away from where there's just less value. So to be honest, I wish I could have competed for that. I wish that they had gotten to know me a little bit. And then they could have made an endorsement that was based on everybody that was running. But I value Broward Teachers Union. I value what they bring to the table. I value what they do. You know, they are fulfilling a part of the system that's fundamental to making this system work. What's, what's interesting, had I had a chance to interview you, is I would have been able to kind of talk about the plans that I would have about raising teacher pay and about some innovative ideas for making sure that teachers can, and other educators, can come and work here as the number-one employer in Broward County and still live within driving distance to their schools. Because right now, that's less and less possible. And we've got to figure out a way to make sure that the economics of education works. And right now, there's a kink in the economic system, which is we can hire some new teachers, and they make it kind of enough to live in Broward County, somewhat close to where they work. But over time, their purchasing power declines. Over the first 10 years of a teacher working, for example, their pay might go up between $3,000 and $5,000, Steve. You just can't pay people on that kind of a ramp and expect them to stick it out. As Donna knows, as my daughter knows, who taught for six years in Houston, it's incredibly difficult work. And you can't ask people to come in year in and year out and put themselves through the pace of being a teacher in a public school and not appreciably raise their salary. So I value BTU. I value the leadership of BTU. I value the mission of BTU. And I wish I had been able to talk to them before they made the endorsement.
Okay. How much confidence do you have, Mr. Zeeman, in the performance so far of Vicky Cartwright as superintendent of schools? And I want to ask you specifically to address the recent decision she had to, she made to ask for the resignations of several people mentioned critically in the grand jury report.
Let me just have a qualifier to this, Steve, because it's important. I am not in a position to have observed Dr. Cartwright nor set standards for Dr. Cartwright's performance in the way that I would as a member of the school board. So my views are, as an outsider who gets to watch a bit of what she's done, I have great respect for her. I have great promise for her. I think, just like with Mr. Runcie, there are combinations of superintendents and school boards that either work well together and function well together and get a lot done. And sometimes, there's just too much friction. There's just not the symbiotic relationship that you like between the board and who they oversee, which is a very small number of people. I'm excited about some of the things she's done on security. I'm disappointed about some of the work that has not been done on the budget. Again, Steve, just so that you know, the budget got approved last Tuesday, and we're three and a half months into the year that that budget is being executed. Where I come from, you look way in advance at budgets. You do multi-year planning. You have multiple workshops. If I were on the school board, we'd start the budget in November or December for the next July, so that we have enough time to make changes and to allow those changes to be put into without people hurting. I believe that the senior staff for Broward County Schools needed to be shaken up. It had been there for a long time. I don't think it was serving students. It's, it's the part of this interview that is disheartening. And I think Donna alluded to this as well, is we'd rather be talking about students. You know, but for the first 23 minutes of this call, we weren't talking about students at all. We weren't even talking about education. And that's, to me, where we find ourselves, where the drama and everything else is just too much. Enough of this is enough. And that's why I think that this election is so important. We, we got to figure out how to get the focus back on students, on education, and how we can run a board along with a superintendent that really grows Broward County Schools into what it should be, rather than what it was. Now, what it was, was not great. I mean, you can come up with your own descriptions of the grand jury report, but if you wipe out all of the historical quotes and the hyperbole, there's a lot of substance to that report. And some of the other substance includes things like lack of teacher pay. It includes being the only district of the three big districts in South Florida that couldn't execute a bond. Miami-Dade and Palm Beach did a bond virtually the same time Broward County did. And ours is the one that Tax Watch called a disaster. We are the only of the three big districts in South Florida a B-rated school district. How can that be, Steve? Broward County is not a B-rated county. So how could we have a B-rated school system? That should have been the focus for all of the past 11 years. The bond is something that certainly needed to be executed better. We've hurt students because of the way we did not execute that bond. Last week, we had a $22 million insurance settlement for one roof that fell down. These are things that are real. We can't hide from them. We should be honest and forthright about them. And then we have to decide, are we ready to break with the past and move forward with different leadership, a different strategic approach to education? Or do we want to stay with what we've had for a long time?
Okay, let me just ask Donna Korn to respond, if you could, Donna, specifically to that point that Mr. Zeeman made, that Broward's the only B-rated school district in South Florida.
Right. So when we talk about, you know, what's important to a district, obviously, those numbers, those letters have meant a lot. But at the end of the day, I can tell you what we have focused on. And if you look at our strategic plan, it isn't about, well, what does the state decide what is successful? It's about what we locally decide. So we actually went out to the community. We talked about what is important to the community for this strategic plan. We talked about what is our important to the community for this strategic plan, and nobody said be a class, be a rated A district. In fact, they talked about things like graduation rates, like having life skills for our students, things that mean something to them, give them an opportunity to be able to be successful, not just in the classroom but outside of the classroom. And so since 2016, 2017, up to our 2020, 2021, our federal graduation rates actually rose from 81% to 89%. In addition to that, we actually, during that period of time, we actually reduced the the gap for our black students. It was a 12.3% gap, and that actually fell to 6.1%. With our Hispanic students, there was a 4.3% gap, and that reduced down to 3.6%. Those are the types of things that is important to our community to ensure that they see, these are the kids that are graduating. Not only are they graduating, but they're graduating with more certifications than they ever have. And again, when we talk about rating our superintendent, what is it we have to deliver for our kids? One of the primary things that we focused on is making sure that we have enough and the right certifications available. AP classes, dual enrollments, but where they can actually walk out of our building. We actually, at some of our schools, have students walking across the district, not only with a bachelor's degree, but some of them have seven and eight different certifications that they are employable the day they leave our schools. Those are the types of things that's important to our community. So yes, we're always looking to push ourselves and to get that A rating. I'm not going to discount that it's not important. What I am going to say is, we have been very successful in Broward County over the years. We have a lot more success ahead of us. And I've been a leader in being able to bring forward many of those, as I have championed our C-Taste programs. In fact, even our JROTC program, it's the largest in the country. We have almost a 99% graduation rate with those students. Those are the kinds of programs that hit home for kids. They're the ones our families want us to invest in, and they're the ones that I have been working to expand and being able to find the new, the innovative learning that's around the corner for us that we haven't even necessarily seen yet in Broward.
Okay.
Steve, can I just react real quick?
Yes.
You know, I appreciate the sentiments behind that. And the programs that Donna talks about are valuable, valuable program. But if you talk to your neighbor about what you want schools, if you talk to the mayors of Broward County like I have, it's all about learning. It's all about being an A district. It's all about quality of instruction and learning gains and producing a workforce that will keep the the organizations and companies that are here still here and will attract more because they want a piece of that amazing workforce that we're producing. To say that the Broward County strategic goal wasn't about student learning.
That is not, Alan.
Donna, I'm almost done, and then I will be as patient after that as I have been up to this point. The the strategic planning process identified some things from some people, a very small number of people in Broward County, about what they thought was important. But all of those things are derivative. The the fundamental reason we have schools is for students to learn. And the community needs our students to learn. I would argue that the programs that we have are wonderful and they're robust and they're vibrant, and kids that participate in those things are far more likely to graduate, go to college, and serve in the military and have informed jobs and all that, and that's wonderful. But all of our students need to learn, and they need to learn more and more. The world and society is becoming more complex, and reading, writing, and arithmetic just isn't enough. We need to teach them more. And so if we're not living up to the fundamentals of a school system, if Miami-Dade County and Palm Beach County can figure out how to be an A-rated school district, why would a company come to Broward County and ask their employees to send their kids to schools that are B-rated? We know that that is the number one metric for a school system, and that should have been the focus for all 10 years, in the same way that the smart bond starts with an S, that's safety and security, and that should have been our first priority for executing the smart fund dollars. And it was not, the entire smart bond execution by other people's assessment has been a disaster. And it's just, I feel like the conversation needs to be about the things that matter the most. And clearly, when the voters give you $800 million, how you execute that is fundamental to maintaining trust with them. And all of Broward County wants our students to learn. And we are a B district. That is a fact.
Okay.
So I'm gonna verify because I'm not going to be misquoted.
Go ahead.
Emphatic, listening is a very important part of this school board role. And Mr. Zeeman, I will tell you, I emphatically said this was about students' learning. What I did say is that what Broward County wasn't looking for as the most important thing was an A rating, not learning. Learning emphatically is what they said. That's why I spoke to life skills. I spoke to graduation rates. I spoke to them walking out with certifications and being able to be successful in our community. So I'm not going to be misquoted as saying something that I didn't say, learning emphatically as having been a teacher, the mom of three, knowing how important education is what changes the game in a community, that is 100% what I always meant.
Okay, for the last 10 years, we've been a B district, which is a reflection of learning.
Okay, let me let me cycle back to colleague Scott Travis. Turn your mic on there.
Sorry about that. So Alan, one of the issues that I've heard from people who are not fans of yours and have been related to your honesty. So one of the issues that has come up has been where you said that you were an admiral, and then it, what my understanding is that you were not actually, you were actually a civilian in the Navy. And then another thing that happened was when I asked you about whether you had gotten any new endorsements since the, since the grand jury report had come out and Ms. Corn had been suspended, you said that, well, BTU has told its members to not, they can just go with whoever they want to, that it's not going to, where, they didn't officially endorse anyone, but they said that, you know, kind of go who you want, and we're not going to be paying or we're not going to be funding her campaign anymore. I, as soon as I got done with you, I called up Anna Fusco to see if that was true. Her response was, he's a liar. So I just wanted to get your response to that. Are these things that, are they misunderstandings of what's going on? And how do you believe that it's important to have somebody who's honest on the school board?
I I think if people would like an honest candidate, then they found one in me. My, I was told about BTUs. I served as a civilian in the United States Navy for a long time. I was promoted very early, and the position that I was promoted to is called a flag officer or admiral rank position. There are always civilian positions. There's three levels of senior executive service. They're equivalent to a one-star, two-star, or three-star admiral in rank. It's the amount of authority and protocol that you're dealt with in that system. It is a way to accurately describe what I've done to say I was admiral rank. I've never pretended ever in my life to say that I was an admiral. I worked alongside many of them. I have one four-star that's endorsed me. I have one two-star general Marine Corps that's endorsed me. I've worked with hundreds of admirals and generals in my national security career, and I've never pretended to be or professed to be an admiral. On the BTU issue, maybe discretion would have been a better part there. I was told that secondhand, but that's not something that I was told directly. I think, as I mentioned before, BTU is a very, very important organization in our system, and I advocate so much for their mission. So I don't think that I have any issue with honesty, Scott. I really don't. I I am just who I am. In some senses, I may even be a little bit too boring for people because I'm attentive to kind of what I say, and I try and be as measured as possible.
And then can you address the issue, apparently Raymond Adderley, you saying that he had tried to extort you or something to that effect?
You know, after the primary, Ray Adderley and I had a number of conversations. In some of those conversations, I felt like the conversations were not focused on who was the best candidate, but what would be in individual best interest. He and I have had long conversations about that since then. I've expressed my own values about working for other people rather than working for yourself, and I trust that he understands exactly what he said, and I, and he understands exactly how I reacted to it, which I would do again.
Thanks. I I've got a follow-up to Scott Travis's question about Ray Adderley. And for those who don't recall, Ray Adderley was the third-place finisher in this race in the primary, I believe, with 23% of the vote. 18-year-old man running for office, he's the son of a Broward County schoolteacher. Ray Adderley endorsed Alan Zeeman either the night of the primary or the morning after, and then rescinded that endorsement. Then he went to work as a field organizer for the American Federation of Teachers, which is BTU's parent, union parent in Broward County. So he's ostensibly working to get out the vote for BTU's favored candidates, including Donna Corn. I know this may be a little bit far afield from from student performance in the classroom, but seems relevant to what's going on here. This is the, this is some of the usual political machinations we always see in Broward County. Mr. Zeeman, what's going on with Ray Adderley working for the teachers' union?
To be clear, there were two other candidates in the race, Mo Hilton and Ray Adderley. Both of them got a substantial number of votes. That's why Donna and I are in a runoff. Mo Hilton came to me the day after the election and said, Alan, you can tell everyone you want that you're a better candidate than Donna Corn. Ray Adderley called me the night and said, you know, for four months, I've been telling everyone you're the better candidate than Donna, if it's you two in a runoff, that that's the case. And and then he went through some machinations that I'm not aware of. I can tell you that between Ray Adderley and I, we have good communications. He understands my values-based approach to life, how I'm in this race because I want to serve others, and that that is incredibly important, that what we say and what we do has to have zero gap between those two things. I'm not aware of his work arrangement. I am aware of the conversations he had with me, and and the ones he's had with me have been very different. Steve, to be honest with you, he's been circumspect and thoughtful about his position in the party and his positions in politics. And I think Ray has some tremendous skills that may serve him very well in the future.
Okay. Opening the floor, opening the floor. Sorry, go ahead, Donna.
But you indicated that Raymond had actually given an endorsement. To my knowledge, he had not given an endorsement. In fact, I also had a very encouraging conversation with him the night of the primary. He was extremely supportive of what I have done, acknowledged the role I've played over the years. And in fact, we've had multiple conversations as well. So other than him putting out a press release that he was working to further those who BTU has endorsed, I didn't realize that there had been another one, and you mentioned that was.
Okay, I I talked to Ray Adderley at length about two hours ago. And I went over it because of some of the things that are swirling in the community. And Ray Adderley told me, quote, what he recalled saying to Alan Zeeman on election night was, quote, "I'm here to support you," unquote.
Got it.
So maybe that's not a formal endorsement, but.
Okay. Thank you.
And he said he had, he said he had misgivings, and then soon after that, the job opportunity arose. So, all right. I'm going to ask Donna Corn a question, and that is that in light of what's happened with the, with the, with the Torrey Alston motion to discontinue paying your legal fees, and I know this has been a long ordeal, and we know everything you've said about the grand jury report, that it was one-sided, that it was politically motivated by Ron DeSantis. Having said all that, have you given any serious consideration to standing in front of the Kathleen C. Wright Building tomorrow morning and saying, in hindsight, these legal fees are my responsibility, not the responsibility of Broward taxpayers?
So, Steve, the reality is, is that the board did what they did. They had the power to do so. And so I'm focused on moving forward. And when I prevail with the ethics issue, there will be an opportunity for me be able to address those fees. The reality is, is that if that's what they felt was the most important thing to do, I can tell you what has been most important for me is to stay very focused on education. That was a political move on their part, and I'm not letting politics cloud what I do each and every day.
Okay, and a question about classroom instruction and a question, I guess, that certainly touches on Governor Ron DeSantis. You know, he's, he's made the point, he's up for reelection, of course, he's on the ballot, he's made the point innumerable times all over the state that it was a grievous mistake for, for school districts to have students learning remotely, learning from home during the pandemic, and that the mask mandates in some districts, including Broward, was an even bigger mistake. Looking back on those two things, what is your feeling today about about those decisions?
So the reason, and I believe in what the Constitution says, the Florida Constitution speaks very clearly to local school boards, these decisions. I believe that was done appropriately, and the reason each community had a different impact from COVID, they still do today. So I was making my personal decisions based on the ICU beds for our, for our children and what was the availability. And as students were children, were not going to have these beds available, as that they were at a 98%, I did not feel that it was in their best interest. And we talk about safety being paramount and first. That is what I put first. And so their safety, not just the students, but also the teachers, their safety is and continues to be paramount. Those were the decisions I made at that time. I believe they were appropriate decisions.
Okay, thank you very much. Alan Zeeman, same question to you, sir. And the question is, hold on, just, you know, remote learning and mandatory masks. Would you have made those same decisions?
I would, and you got to recognize that there's a cost to these things. But in the middle of a pandemic, you know, a century or so between pandemics, we have to figure out what the best thing to do is. We have to take the best advice of our health professionals, and I thought that that was consistent with with our best advice. It does have a consequence, though, and I think that the one difference that I would have taken after that is to act very, very seriously about recovering from the COVID slide. What we ended up doing is going right back to 180-day school year with the standard day. We had summer schools that tried to do a little bit of academics, but we didn't really adjust what we needed to adjust to overcome the COVID slide. We still are suffering from a pretty big gap at the fourth, seventh, and ninth grade level in terms of meeting proficiency standards, and the COVID slide only made those worse, particularly in mathematics. My three kids, who are in third and fifth grade this year, got huge support because the family was able to do that. But for the average student, it is very, very difficult to overcome this loss, this mask-wearing, this ability to do remote, asking teachers to do something they weren't fully trained to do. It was tough on the actual education achievement. And again, if we're thinking about the students, it was appropriate to make them continue remote learning and to wear a mask when we, when, when we pulled them together. But at the same time, the recovery system needed to be kind of a five-alarm fire, not just something where we have a pandemic, we make the right decisions, and then the reaction to it afterwards is basically to spring back to the way that we always did school. We needed to do more. We need to do more, and we need to keep focused on moving forward to becoming an A school district.
So if I could just expand on that a little bit, Steve, if you don't mind. So we absolutely need to keep doing more. Unfortunately, it's misleading to indicate we had a regular 180-day school. In fact, we spent hundreds of millions of dollars specifically on adult, act, one-student, two, and three-student tutoring across this district. We extended our days in the morning as well as in the evenings. There were often Saturday schools that were provided throughout our entire district. Summer school was afforded to every single student. And so this was not a regular 180 days. Let's just go back. In fact, I know Mr. Zeeman speaks of the budget all the time. If he looks at that budget, he's going to see what those dollars were spent, and they were absolutely spent on being able to provide the additional education. We're not there. We're not where we need to be. Math absolutely is, has been a hit for us, as well as every other aspect of where we're seeing education. Math is near and dear to my heart. It's one of the things I've advocated forever, that we talk about literacy so much, and we sometimes leave that conversation behind. And I think, for me, those are equally important for our students to be successful, and that is absolutely where we have put our dollars.
And this is a good area, Steve.
Hold on just one second. Alan, just hold on just one second. My colleague Dan Sweeney had his hand up. Dan, go ahead. We're running out of time.
I, I, I think Alan was about to answer my question, but, but it sounded like it. But like, you said we needed to do more and we need to do more. So my question is, what exactly is it at this point in the, in, you know, to address COVID slide and the pandemic and all, at this point down the road, what exactly is it that we need to do that we aren't doing?
Wow. I mean, Dan, there's so many things on that menu. And and let me just highlight a difference between my opponent and myself. I believe you fixed the problem when you can measure the results that you wanted to achieve and you achieved them. It doesn't count to count inputs. It doesn't count to have soundbites. What matters is are kids proficient in the core academic studies and beyond, in which they really need to be in order to thrive in today's society? And we have not invested that. Yes, Donna, we spent federal dollars on academics as the federal law required us to do. There's no great rewards for that. We had to spend that money that way. What we didn't do is go into our core money and reallocate funds from some things that we probably didn't need to more on academic stand. We need to think more about what Donna talked about in terms of extending the mornings and extending the afternoons. We need to have cooperative agreements with the 31 municipalities in Broward County so that summer programs include at least 50% academics for the next three years. We need to work with sports teams and with businesses to make sure that we have kind of a community-wide, all-hands-on-deck approach to eliminating the proficiency gap. We still have way, way too many kindergartners that show up that don't know letters and numbers. We still have way, way too many kindergartners that show up that don't know letters and numbers. In some elementary schools, by the way, that's 80% of the kindergartners show up, and they're not ready to learn the basics of kindergarten. Our proficiency grades at the end of sixth, excuse me, let me get the grades right, at the end of fifth, eighth, and 10th grade are not where we would like them to be. It is why we continue to be a B district. And again, I think, Dan, we need to do as much as we can, both within traditional methods and some innovative methods, to make sure that we are educating everybody that goes to school in Broward County, and we're just not doing it. We should not quit until we are comfortable that we are an A district for multiple years, producing the workforce of tomorrow.
I want to give Donna Corn a chance to answer this too, but when you say innovative means, what exactly do you mean by that?
So we've met with some sports coaches that have a lot of middle school and high school kids that participate in sports. And they've said, look, we believe that they're falling behind academically, but we get them for three hours a night, four nights a week. Would it be okay to put them over there in the, in the buildings that we have that are good for academics with their laptops, and they work one hour before they get two hours of practice? And the answer is absolutely, we need to do that. We have businesses who have space available for kids to learn after hours, who are willing to put up money to pay for private tutors to come in and do extra remediation. It's completely aligned with the curriculum that they're in, because that's gotten easier and easier to do. But we're not taking kind of the whole of government, the whole of county approach to how that we overcome this COVID slide. It is going to last for a long, long time, and it doesn't need to. We need to figure out how to pull the five alarm fire button and figure out how to get the entire community to work hard on this issue until, until we get our proficiency scores back to where they were before the pandemic.
Running out of time, and Scott Travis has a question.
Yeah, thank you. Donna, we asked this of Alan. So what's your view of Dr. Cartwright's performance? And you would be, if you were still on the board, they're doing evaluations right now, you'd be giving her a rating. Can you tell us what you would likely give her right now and why?
Yeah, so what I can say is, to something Mr. Zeeman just touched on, is we should not. And the reality is, that's why I am continuing to run for this school board. I have no intent for us to do anything but to fight for the end game, and that end game is outcomes. It isn't about what are you putting in at the front end, it's what you're getting is the outcome. And in fact, when we talked about the strategic plan, and we were talking, Scott, to your point, about what is it that we do to evaluate Dr. Cartwright, and how will we be evaluating her? The reality is, I am the board member who said evaluations should be based on outcomes. Don't tell me all the things you put in the front end. Show me how those things you put in the front end gave us the outcomes that our kids deserve. And so that has always been my guiding principle. It's the one that I look to make whoever our superintendent is accountable. At the time, this time, Dr. Cartwright is obviously going through a lot of transition. There is a lot being asked of her. You know, whether or not we would all navigate these rough waters the same way. I think she and I probably don't see eye to eye on many of those things. At the same time, I know that she has many challenges, and they are decisions that she has to make in a larger, global way. So at this point, in terms of what's been established, it would have to be a matter of looking at what are those outcomes? Looking at the actual numbers to be able to give you what that rating would be.
I wish we had a lot more time, but it's four minutes before four o'clock. And I want to say, first of all, Donna Corn, thank you very much for participating today and making this an even better interview. Alan Zeeman, thanks to you as well, sir. Appreciate you being here.
Do we have a chance, Steve, for any closing comments?
Yes, I'm going to give each of you probably 45 seconds to a minute. And I'll tell you what, Donna, you're the incumbent, or you were the incumbent. I know you're suspended, but you've been on the school board a long time. I'm going to use my discretion. Alan Zeeman, you go first with the closing statement, sir.
Oh, thank you very much. I, I think that, that this race from now for the next 49 days is going to be quite interesting, as you mentioned, Steve. In my mind, there's risk on one side. We don't know what that risk is, but we know what the outcome of a negative decision by the governor would be, which is we have another DeSantis appointee for another couple of years. I think it's time to focus on the students. I think it's time to put the drama and the grand jury and the ethical charges and using taxpayer money to fight the release of the grand jury, using taxpayer money to fight ethics charges. I just think enough is enough. I think we need to move on. I think we need to figure out how to lift up Broward County schools. There's some very clear and big ways in which Broward County schools could do better. Some of it has to do with pay for educators, some of it has to do with just core educational achievement. We continue to be a B district, and we have been for 10 years. And that's enough time to fix it, and it hasn't been fixed. And so I think having some new blood on with a different set of experiences like I've had would allow us to start over and to set our heights to becoming the best school district in the nation.
Okay. All right, thank you, Alan Zeeman, Donna Corn.
Thank you. I'm going to take a quick moment to address something many have asked me to address, which is the ethics complaint. What I can tell you is, is that when I went and spent time in Naples, it was at a very challenging time, the saddest time in my life. It is the time in which I was coping with a very tenuous divorce, one in which has been documented, unfortunately, in many different ways in the courtrooms. Due to the fact that I always put my children first, I'm not going to disparage their father in a public setting. But what I am going to do is tell you that it was an opportunity by a friend to come over and have some respite. I did actually do that. But before doing that, I called our legal counsel at the school district. I then further, after speaking to her, asked for her written response. Attorneys from the school district gave me a written response. They told me that aligned with the ethics training that I had been receiving over the years, it was, it was within our ethics guidelines to be able to do so, and here are the parameters. I followed all of those parameters. I have checks, those checks were cashed. Not only did I then take care of that, I actually posted on Facebook. I wasn't trying to hide anything. And then after that, I actually went back, and before us came an item where the competitor to Mr. Polari was actually brought before the school board. He had not had a competitor before, and I voted to bring that competitor on. So when it comes to this ethics complaint, I can tell you that it is frivolous. And I did all of the things I would ask any elected official to do if they were in my place. With that said, I will say, I am very, very proud to say that I am endorsed by the BTU, by the AFL-CIO, by the Broward firefighters, by Equality Florida, by BPAA. That is not only the endorsements of those large groups, but of those who are throughout the community, who have had a great deal of faith and trust in me, and they know that I come to the table as a teacher, as a mom, as a child advocate and a business leader. And I please ask for you to continue to support me in the general election in November. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Donna Corn, thank you, Alan Zeeman. Thanks to both of you for being here today. Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, so long.
Thank you, Steve.